Hi, I'm Julie Thompson. Welcome to the Plymouth Select Board Candidate Interview. I want to take a moment to thank our candidate for participating in this interview and collaborating with PAC TV to bring this informational programming to residents and voters this election season. Let me explain the format. We will be conducting a one-on-one interview-style Q&amp;A format with each candidate lasting at the most 45 minutes. Responses will not be timed, and follow-up questions may be asked during this format. We aim to ask up to five questions, but that will depend on the length of the responses, along with any follow-up discussion during this exchange. Candidates will be allowed to address anything not covered, or that they would like to add clarification to, at the end of the interview in their closing remarks. Let's get started. Today, we're speaking with Vedna Haywood, one of the six candidates for two seats for the Plymouth Select Board in the Plymouth Town election. Vedna, thank you very much for joining us today.
And thank you, Julie, for having me.
Okay, we're gonna hop right into the first question.
Okay.
Okay. It's about capital expenses and budgeting. Every year, budgets are prepared, debated, recalculated, and finally presented to town meeting for approval. Salaries and benefits, town-owned buildings, and ongoing capital expenditures are often debated, and there are always projects or initiatives that don't get funded each year. The Select Board is required to review the annual and the capital budgets. What parameters do you use in determining which budgetary items you will support and which you will not?
Okay, so I will look at some of the foundational needs that are for the community. And for me, some of those foundational needs include infrastructure needs, in terms of roads and buildings, social services, our educational services. Clearly, when we do look at the budget, salaries are the majority-weighted. So, we do have employees that we do have to pay, so that is paramount as well. But then, just looking at the parameters regarding, you know, salaries, which do include some, you know, collective bargaining and what have you, we also have to make sure that there's a balance in terms of not only the needs of the community, but also the strain that it may place on the constituency by way of taxes. Public safety also is paramount in terms of infrastructure needs, and then capital improvements in terms of our buildings and such, so that we're not looking at costs associated to some of these buildings when we defer, and not improve.
So, you mentioned a whole bunch of things. Now, the public education, the education, you don't have a lot to do with the budget as far as that goes, is that correct?
When you say we don't have a lot--
As the Select Board. I mean, the Select Board doesn't really have a lot to weigh in on the particulars of the budget, maybe the overall budget?
So, we do. We have, you know, we do weigh in on the overall budget, so we do make recommendations.
Yeah.
Right. So, but, I mean, we're making those recommendations.
Right.
And in that, hopefully, educating ourselves in terms of the needs, the specific needs of our educational system, so that when it's brought to town meeting, you know, there is some sense of support--
Right.
--for the educational systems. But it is the school committee themselves, they're the ones that actually--
Create that budget.
Yes.
So, the Select Board doesn't do the line item budget--
No.
--the way they do for the rest of the town?
No.
They just, the school committee does that?
Does the line item budget, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so if you had two equally important initiatives, or programs, or things that need to get done, and only one can get funded, is there a kind of a rule you might use, or a parameter you might use to say, "I'm gonna have to take this one this time and put this one off"?
The parameter I would possibly use is, what does this, what does the cost of deferring this look like in the future?
Okay. So, if you don't select one--
Yes.
--what does that mean down the road?
Yes, what does that mean down the road?
You have to weigh--
Yes, exactly. Is this an immediate need? Is this something that we could, you know, kind of defer a little bit later, or so on and so forth? And what is the cost of that deferment?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Not only to the town, but to, you know, the constituency.
Right, to the taxpayers, exactly. Okay. Now, let's go into question two, which is about infrastructure.
Oh!
The town of Plymouth is massive in area, as we all know. Infrastructure integrity is a complicated subject, and includes the sourcing and delivery of water--
Yes.
--the collection and transport of sewage, the upkeep of roads and bridges--
Yes.
--just to name a few.
Yes.
What do you think are Plymouth's greatest challenges with its current infrastructure?
Oh, my. So, our greatest challenges in terms of our current infrastructure is actually based on our growth. So, because we are growing quickly, we're putting a strain on our roads, we're putting a strain on our water system. So, those are immediate, immediate needs. I've had the opportunity, within this particular campaign, to do a lot of speaking to, or speaking with constituency throughout Plymouth. And some of this constituency actually live in some of the newer areas. And some of the strain is traffic. And so, and in that, it causes a public safety issue. So, with the infrastructure piece, it's looking, it's looking at our growth, and seeing what's truly feasible for this town, what is sustainable for this town. And then, also, this issue of water. We have a sole-source aquifer that not only supports our town, but supports surrounding towns as well. And so, we have to be able to make sure that this, that this source of water will not only support us, but support future generations. We're, our growth is outpacing our ability to kind of sustain, or actually support our infrastructure. So, we have to begin to kind of step back and look at this balance, and see if this is truly, truly feasible for us.
So, you spoke about the roads and the water, it's been the two biggest infrastructure issues.
Yes.
For the roads, what do we do? What can you do? Is it a lack of roads? Is it, the roads aren't in good shape? I mean, what about the roads do you think need to be improved?
I think it's how we're building in respect to the roads that we have.
Okay.
So, for instance, and I know that we don't necessarily have a full say as to some of these buildings that are being built, or some of the developments that are being built, just because of the need of housing. And so, the state has asked, you know, our particular community, because we do have the land, to increase our ability to have more housing. But when you say, "I'll use," for example, and I know most people do use this example, the oasis off of our old exit five. And the fact that we have limited, in terms of the traffic or the area, there's limitations there. So, once the oasis is filled, we're going to be looking at a traffic buildup in that area. So, we don't necessarily, we don't have the infrastructure there to support that building.
So, is that one of the infrastructure problems, is that that building was built before we had the roads or the systems to support it?
The building was built before we had the systems to support it.
Okay.
And so, now, we have to, so now, we're going to be playing catch-up. Once, once the area is filled, and we begin to understand this true impact of added homes or--
And oasis is an apartment complex?
It's an apartment complex.
And how many units, do you know?
I think it's, I think it's at least 300 units.
Okay, so it's multi-hundred?
Yes, yeah. And so, how do we deal with that? How do we deal with the added strain? We have a school there, we have a shopping center there, we have our police, we have a jail behind there as well, we have businesses. And so, and then, residential area not too far down the road, what is that gonna look like for this community? Do we need to, should we have done some sort of traffic study prior to? And is if the traffic, and if we did, is this, was this traffic study correct in terms of saying that this was--
We're all set to handle this.
Yes, we're all set to handle this.
Yeah. Did the traffic study say that, if there in fact was one?
Yes.
Okay. So, water, roads, is there any other infrastructure within the town that concerns you?
Buildings.
Buildings, in what way?
Buildings in the fact that, I mean, we're an older town, and so, and some of our buildings are older buildings. And so, what are we doing to kind of sustain that upkeep? Also, too, looking forward in terms of just like sustainability, as we look at how our buildings are being structured, are we in line with green, you know, what's it called? Greenhouse emissions and things like that? This is an added cost and strain to our population.
Okay. Okay. Very good. We'll go on to question number three, which is about the new proposed charter. After many months of meetings, input, and analysis, a duly-elected group of charter commission members finalized their suggested changes to the town of Plymouth's existing charter.
Yes.
Whether or not to adopt this new charter will be on the ballot on May 20th.
Yes.
Will you be voting yes or no on the adoption of this charter, and why?
Okay. So, I do believe that, as a community, we have to look at how we are governed. The last time the charter was discussed or looked at was over, close to over 30 years ago, I think it was like 1999, or in the late 90s. And so, now, we're at a crossroads. We are growing rapidly, and so, the question is, is this particular charter, the one that we're in now, is this sustainable for this community?
The existing one?
The existing one.
Not the one that has been proposed?
Exactly. Is the existing one sustainable for this community?
Okay.
And so, we had these elected commissioners to oversee and ask the public their points of view in terms of the charter, and took some of that information, and they created the charter that's going to be proposed on May 20th.
Right.
In terms of supporting the charter, I support accountability, I support efficiency in terms of government. I support looking at different ways so that we, as a community, can remain sustainable. That's what I support. I support the fact that there needs to be a reevaluation in the way that we govern. And so, and so, for me, the, how Plymouth will be governed will be based on the populace. It will be based on the majority vote. And once that comes into fruition, however that is, if the charter passes, then I will follow the guidelines that have been proposed within this charter, just as I am running under this particular charter. You know, it's almost a de facto, as a person who is running at this particular point, it's almost a de facto acceptance of the charter that you're running under, right? Or the type of government that you're running under. To say a yes or no, I don't want to sway people like either way. I think people need to actually read some of the information that's been given to you, whether that be through the town, whether that be through other organizations, that have kind of been able to just take the pieces, some immediate pieces that have changed within this charter, and so that you can make your own decision.
Okay. So, you're not going to answer whether you will particularly vote yes or no at this time?
No.
Okay. Is there, are there parts of the proposed charter that you think are really a great new addition, and are there any parts that you think, eh, I'm not so crazy about that?
Okay. I think, I think there are parts that are great addition. I think it's the communication piece, in terms of increasing communication between the town and its constituency, and having more public engagement. This is, you know, for me, it's a government for the people, by the people. So, we should include the people. I know that, you know, there's been some issue taken with, and I'm not going to say yes if I agree with it or not, in terms of this addition of two other people that would represent particular parts, or, I'm sorry, I think it's not two other people, it's three other people that would represent particular parts of the town, as opposed to being an at-large.
Okay. You mean that the number of select people would go from five to seven?
Five to seven.
So, it actually is, it is actually two--
It's a two--
--additional, but it's three other, it's three--
Particular people that--
Three segments of the town would be represented--
Represented, exactly.
Right, as three of the seven.
Exactly, yeah. So, you go from five to seven, in terms of how many, but then, you have these three people who actually are looking, or representing particular segments of the town, exactly.
So, that's a positive in your eyes?
Oh, I didn't say it was positive or negative.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
What, so, it reflects other governments that are already, or that are already in place within our Commonwealth. It is, so if you were to go to a mayoral forum of government, where you had a council, that's exactly how it would be framed, you know? Where you have particular people who are looking at different aspects, or different issues within their area, and speaking to those. The hope is that when you're making decisions regarding the town as a whole, the whole board would have the intention in terms of looking at the town as a whole as well--
Right, representing all.
--is representing all, absolutely, absolutely. So, we have to also speak to this intention of, you know? So, for me, I think there are great parts to this, to this new proposed charter. Is the charter complete? No, I don't think so. I think there does need to be some added pieces to that as well. I think even in the advent of our school committee, there wasn't a lot of, or our school district, there wasn't a lot of addition there, too. So, I don't think it's complete.
Okay.
I'll say that.
All righty. We'll go on to question number four, which is about economic development and tourism. Tourism and economic development are crucial aspects of Plymouth's current and future financial health.
Yes.
What priorities do you place on these areas, and what are the drawbacks that concern you? And you can take them separately or together.
Okay, can you just repeat the get-together?
Sure. Yeah. Tourism and economic development are crucial aspects of Plymouth's current and future financial health. What priorities would you place on these areas, and what are the drawbacks of either that might concern you?
Okay. So, yes, I think economic development is paramount--
Okay.
--in terms of, in terms of how we function as a town, in terms of our sustainability. And so, I do place a great importance on economic development--
Yep.
--and tourism. You know, tourism, especially, they support our businesses, and our businesses support us and support our community. So, that's also paramount. I think we should create like a means so where we're a little bit more accepting of our visitors that come to our town.
You mean our tourists?
Our tourists, but I call them visitors.
Okay, yeah, tourists are visitors, yeah.
Yeah, visitors. And so--
How are we not accepting of our, what can we do to make that better, that experience better?
I think sometimes, you know, some of, some of visitors come to, you know, they not only come to frequent our businesses, but they also come to see our sites--
Sure.
--you know, also come to see our beaches. There's a lot of stipulation and restriction around that. And I understand the balance, because we also have to preserve this for our community as well.
Right.
But, but can we create a balance so that we are supporting those tourism dollars, supporting our visitors in that sense, while still, while still having, or supporting our constituents need to?
Right.
So, it's just looking at that, looking at some of these bylaws that are very, very, very restrictive in terms of our tourists. Economic development, though.
Yep, yep.
So, economic development. How do we support or attract larger businesses here?
What do you think?
I think, I think, one, in order to support or attract them, is also to create like workforce development. So, we, you know, some of us has mentioned bringing in biotech companies, green technologies. How are, so, aside from, say, engineering, or some of their, you know, sciences, scientists or whichever, they also need administrative, they need logistics.
Yeah.
How do we support that? Do we, you know, are there ways that we can make arrangements or agreements with some of our institutions, our schoolings, to create programs so that we can create workforce that support these company? And thus, in creating workforces that support the companies and giving living wages to these, we are thus supporting our community. 25% of our community actually travel. I am one of those people, travel for work, because of pay.
Yep.
Because of pay. How is it that we can keep some of them here, you know? Also, too, we, 25% of the community that work here are from outside communities.
Right.
And, and I don't know if we're necessarily supporting them through true, like, living wages, through great-paying jobs. So, workforce development is paramount in terms of economic development.
So, when you say workforce development, so if a big company wants to come here, they're like, "Oh, Plymouth is great, I like this, I like this, I like this," but I don't have any workforce. That's what you're saying?
Yes, I don't have, I don't have the workforce to support these jobs, yeah.
So, and you made a few suggestions. What about where the workforce lives?
In terms of housing, is that what you--
I would think that would be part of the economic development.
Yeah. So, this housing piece is, housing to me, so, when I look at some of the issues that affect Plymouth, they're not singular issues. This is like a systemic approach that I like to take, because one affects the other. So, housing for me is a public safety issue, right? So, stable housing is central to the health and wellbeing of our families, and it helps to foster opportunities in the community, and that being, you know, the workforce. Right now, unfortunately, in terms of how housing is calculated, it's calculated by HUD, so it's a federal calculation, and I'm just gonna use an example. So, Plymouth, the median income for Plymouth is $97,000--
Okay.
--for a family of four. So, the area median income, we take 60% of that, and that's $58,000. The affordability is normally defined by 30% of that $58,000, which is $17,000, which is like $1,400 for rent and/or mortgage, and so on and so forth.
Per month?
Per month. That is not what's happening here. We're looking at $2,000 to $3,000 a month, which is not necessarily affordable.
So, housing is a huge aspect of economic--
It is, yes, it is. Housing is, even infrastructure is a huge, huge aspect. How are people getting in and out? If we have particular companies, if it's commercial development that we're seeking, depending on that type of commercial development, what are the traffic patterns that exist in town? Does this, does this particular business need to bring in larger items that require trucks and so on and so forth?
Right.
We have limitations here, in terms of how we can get on and off--
Right.
--particular roads. So, that's, that's a big piece, too, and that would be more state involvement as well, if we're looking at our roads and so on. So, different pieces, so workforce development, housing, and then, it's also infrastructure we're looking at, our roads.
What do you think of the proposed convention center that is being talked about to be brought to somewhere in Plymouth or Plymouth County?
I actually agree with it. Yeah, I agree. Because when you look at convention center, you're now looking at aspects in which we're not, we're bringing business in, we are exposing ourselves to newer visitors, I would say that. In that, too, that brings money to the town, when we have the advent of new visitors that now supports our businesses. Our businesses have taken a hit. They have taken a hit. They're down at least 25%, 20%, 30%, which is a large amount.
It is.
That's not sustainable for them. So, I do agree with that.
Okay.
Then, we also were providing jobs--
Right.
--you know, with the convention center. And so, yeah, I do agree with bringing convention centers, just as to where--
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, that's the big if.
Yes.
Yeah. And what about, have you heard about the new cruise ship, the smaller cruise ship that's gonna be able to come into our harbor now?
Yes, yeah.
How do you feel about that?
So, different things. You know, some time ago, we were, the blue economy was brought up, and that's an aspect of the blue economy, is bringing in cruise ships. But the question is, who is part of those conversations? Right? So, we have to make sure that when we are talking about this economic development piece, who is it impacting, whether that be positively or adversely? And so, are we bringing, like, our harbor master, are we bringing our fishermen, in our lobstermen, into these conversations? Because that directly impacts them as well--
Sure.
--the cruise ship. Though it may bring business, though it may bring, you know, dollars to us, but it's at what cost? So, I am for economic development in that it mitigates the strain to the taxpayer, and brings in, you know, different sources of revenue here to us. But we have to make sure that we are not creating other issues when we, when we, you know, agree--
Okay.
--to certain aspects of, again--
All righty.
Yeah.
My fifth question, too. There are six individuals running for two, three-year terms on the Select Board.
Yes.
Each brings a different set of experiences and history. Given that one of the Select Board's general powers and duties is to adopt policy directives and guidelines--
Yes.
--how do you balance your own viewpoints and biases to serve the greater good of the entire town?
So, I will say, given, so in my experience as a school committee member for the past five years, I've had the opportunity to actually be on the policy committee. And so, I've served on our school committee policy committee for the past five years, working in conjunction with other school committee members, as well as the administration with the district. In that, when we're looking at policy, we're looking at the greater good of the students and/or our families, and/or employees, whether that be administration, not administration, but whether that be teachers, so on and so forth.
Right. So, how do you translate that to the Select Board?
Okay, so you translate, you have to, you have to put your, your belief systems aside, and actually take into account impacts of your policy. Your experience, I mean, your experience, you know, colors--
Of course.
--your policy--
Of course, yep.
But, but specific belief systems shouldn't. You should be looking at what is best for your constituency in terms of this policy and/or, you know, by law that you are creating. So, that's what, so that's what we look at. I like the fact that, within my school committee, we have varied points of view. So, that allows us to kind of impart our, you know, this viewpoint and say, "Okay, you know, I, I'm kind of looking at this from, you know, this aspect." We are advocates for the community, and so, in that, we're taking into account the voices of the community when we're, when we're looking at some of these policy issues.
Right.
So, this is what we should be taking into. It's the, it's the voices of the community, not your, it shouldn't be your overarching voice, I will say that.
Okay, got it.
Yeah.
Okay. So, for the last few minutes here, you can look right into that camera--
Oh, okay.
--you can talk about anything we didn't talk about, anything you want to clarify. If you have any statements you want to read, that's great. And then, finally, why don't you tell people why they should vote for you?
Oh, okay. So, some of the other issues that are important to me are the sustainability in terms of open space, in terms of, well, we did talk about water, but water mitigation, yes. And so, those things are important to me, as well as preservation. First and foremost, I'd like to thank PAC TV for hosting this forum, and giving us an opportunity to share our thoughts with you. Once again, my name is Vedna Haywood, and I am running for Plymouth Select Board. I'm running because I believe in the future of Plymouth. I believe in Plymouth's possibilities, its people, and its progression. And I say progression, because progress is moving towards something better. This is very different to change. It is more in the realm of goals, purpose, and possibility. Plymouth for my family and many others is a place of possibility, a place to lay roots, form relationships, create community, and like many of you, a place that compelled us to serve in a manner that preserves the shared ideology we have. And this ideology is rooted in what's best for the community, in our love for the community, and in our choices in how we move forward. I'll share a little bit of my journey with you. I'm a transplant from South Florida, but of immigrant roots. We came to this country, just like many others did, much like parts of the history of Plymouth, seeking refuge, freedom, and opportunity. My parents instilled in me a love for this country, for service, and for civic engagement that helped shape me into the person I am today. A dedicated community servant, volunteer, and leader for over 25 years. And those 25 years have been mixed with a range of community service and nonprofit work from local to national level, and in that space, I've had the opportunity to affect and impact change, create policy-- and impact change, create policy, and oversee multimillion-dollar budgets. Now, having spent over a decade in Plymouth and having some of the understanding of its history and pattern, I question if we're truly in a pattern of progression. I question if we have the leadership that works in partnership with its people, and I question some of the decisions that have not been inclusive of all of our voices. We are living in a pattern of reactivity instead of being proactive. And there are varied issues to address, some of the issues we've even addressed today, from water to affordable housing, economic development, sustainability, public health, and so on. All of these issues are interconnected, and we need to approach this from a systems perspective that recognizes each decision we make affects another. We need people who have the experience and meaningful intention to approach decisions in a thoughtful and inclusive manner, people who are solution-oriented, people with a vision, and who will collaborate with others so that Plymouth can remain viable and thriving as a community. I am that person. We have a choice to make in May and how we shape this community that will positively impact the next decade. And so I ask for your vote on May 20th. Thank you.
Thank you, Vedna. Thank you so much for participating in this interview.
Thank you so much for having me.
We wish you the best of luck through your campaign and in the election. For our viewers, thank you for joining us. If you're interested in watching replays of this interview, please visit our website, pacTV.org, for replay times and online viewing options, including PAC TV's on-demand and streaming service, PAC TV Prime. And please, make your choices heard by voting in the election on Saturday, May 20th. Thank you and good day.